Okay, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the City Bellflower City Council Tuesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven o'clock to order. Reconvene in from, reconvene for the open session, and there was no reportable action in a closed session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Potem Sanzaines.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Coops.
Here.
Mayor Dutton.
Here. Okay, may I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Dan Coops and the pledge allegiance by our Director of Parks and Recreation, PJ Milana.
Let's please bow for a word of prayer. Our gracious heavenly Father, we come to you this evening hour to give you thanks for all the blessings that you've given to us individually and collectively and to our city. Be with us as we deliberate the issues in front of us to give us wisdom to do the right thing for our city. Be with those that would protect us. We think of especially the firefighters and the law enforcement agencies that are busy trying to put out the fires in the other areas. Please bless them and be safe as they continue to do their work. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place your right hand over your heart and join with me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, nominations for the twenty-fifth annual Bravo Awards are now being accepted. The Bravo Awards, which stands for Bellflower recognizes acts of valor and outstanding service to honor our residents and employees in Bellflower who have demonstrated outstanding public service or acts of heroism related to public safety during the past year. Citizens, residents, sheriff and fire department personnel, medical and security professionals are all eligible to be nominated. The nomination deadline is Friday, November ninth of this year. Recipients of the Bravo nineteen awards will be honored at the special ceremony on Thursday, February seventh of two thousand and nineteen at eleven a.m. in the William and Jane Bristol Civic Auditorium. That's adjacent to the Bellflower City Hall. Jim Abbott, a major league pitcher, will serve as our special keynote speaker along with other local dignitaries. Mayor Potem Sunny Sanzaines.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Thursday, um, our Public Works Director and Assistant City Manager Len Gurek and I attended a conference in New Orleans. It is a conference of the Design Build Institute of America. Our main event center and museum was nominated to a prestigious award, and it's a big thing. That organization is composed of fifty-four hundred members around the country, and um, our main event center was one of the twenty-nine finalists in the design category. So we went up there to receive the award, and we were also kind of surprised that after we received this small trophy for the National Merit, National Award of Merit, we're also awarded the National Award of Excellence in the Civic Assembly category. And that is this humongous, humongous trophy. So we're very pleased to accept this award from the Design Build Institute of America, and we're very honored to be representing the City of Bellflower together with our architects, Seelman Wright Architects, and they were also there. So it is a great, great evening for us in New Orleans. It was a short trip, but it was well worth it. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to present this award to you.
Let me take a break. Let's all go down in the platform down there. This is kind of a big deal. This is a, is a big deal. The museum event center combination building that was built that opened this year was in the major category of getting awards for its design. And did you say out of twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine finalists.
Out of twenty-nine finalists, and how many, how many categories? Were there five?
Seven categories.
Seven categories. We got two of them. I thought that's pretty good, darn good. Where this little bellflower is doing great things. To give you all an idea, this council saw a presentation from a developer for that event center first, and we all saw it, and it didn't make muster. It looked like a hideous governmental institution building, and it was our vision to have build something that was publicly owned that didn't look like that. It looked like a developer of any, anything that was out there. And that's why we worked so hard to achieve what we got, and that must be one of the reasons with the developer and the architect that designed it to get this award, and it exceeded all our goals.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Mr. Coops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Santa Claus is coming to town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Be sure to mark your calendar for the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and that's set for Friday, December seventh, six-thirty p.m. in downtown Bellflower. Local residents and neighboring communities are invited for a festive event filled with carolers, crafts, and refreshments. A holiday skating rink for scooters and skates will be available, along with the Bellflower Recreation Motion Program and sledding slides. Complimentary refreshments and snacks will be served. The event is free, open to the public. If you'd like any more information, you can call City Hall at five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four, extension two-two-six-one. So PJ, thirty-five hundred people have been known to come to these events. What do we think of Christmas tree?
Yes, between thirty-five hundred, five thousand. Last year, we had a little more with the snow sledding, so we're hoping to build upon that this year as well.
So it's really a wonderful opportunity to see what goes on Bellflower Boulevard. The little kids just love it. Old people like, everybody likes it. It's a cool thing, and I want to be able to see you there. We have carolers that come from Mayfair High. They're always exceptional, and it's one of the highlights of our, our winter. And so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Juan Garza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those are too hard announcements to follow up. The South Coast Air Quality Management District offers a year-round residential lawn mower rebate program for residents of Los Angeles, San Bernardino, Orange, and Riverside Counties. The residential electric lawn mower rebate program helps to offset the cost of an electric mower, of an electric mower. Program participants can purchase a new lawn mower either online or from a manufactured, authorized retailer or dealer, including hardware and home improvement stores. The program will allow residents to turn in their old gasoline lawn mower to an approved dismantler for approved destruction and receive a rebate based on the purchase price of a new battery-operated electric lawn mower. The rebate program is implemented on a first-come, first-served basis and will provide up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars towards the cost of the battery electric lawn mower. To learn more about the rebate process, please visit www.aqmd.gov. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. We skipped one. Um, I have Mr. Milana. You sure you want to do this?
Yeah, we forgot you.
We have a presentation on Mr. Milana, holiday programs and events. We'll start later. Well, we already talked about that, didn't we?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Uh, this will be a quick presentation. It's an annual update on what's coming up for the holidays and the different programs that we have going on in the community. First, I'm gonna talk about our Thanksgiving and Christmas food and toy drives. Uh, so those are ongoing tomorrow, or November fifteenth will be the last day we're accepting donations for Thanksgiving, and then this Saturday, November seventeenth, is when delivery will be made, and we are still looking for volunteers for that, and on the next slide we'll have the contact information to help out with these programs. And then for December, we have our, the toy drive and the food drive, and that'll take place on December fifteenth. Other opportunities we have throughout the year at the Volunteer Centers, we have opportunities to volunteer at our nutrition program. Volunteers are needed for the Bellflower Looking Better Program. We are constantly looking for assistance at the elementary school sites, tutoring and mentoring programs, convalescent visits and activities, and of course assisting with all of our special events. We utilize a lot of volunteers as well at food pantries. For information on all of the programs and services that are offered through the Volunteer Center, residents can contact the Volunteer Center at five-six-two-eight-zero-four-one-four-two-four, extension two-three-three-one, or they can email Michelle Navarro, and her email is on the screen. It's mnavarro@bellflower.org. Other community programs we have coming up, this started in recent history, the Shop with a Cop program, and that'll be held on December twenty-first. Fifteen students will be identified by the school district case managers, and the students will put together a wish list for Christmas. The officers are now seeking monetary donations and gift cards to help purchase the gifts on each of the students' wish lists. For more information on this program, you can contact Community Services Officer Sacramento Ramos, five-six-two-nine-two-five-zero-one-two-four, extension two-five-three-zero. Our Bellflower Civic Chorus will be presenting their show Christmas Star at the auditorium here at City Hall. General admission is five dollars, and their show dates will be Friday, December fourteenth at seven p.m., Saturday, December fifteenth at two-thirty p.m., Sunday, December sixteenth at two-thirty p.m. Their phone number is five-six-two-eight-six-nine-five-nine-four-seven if anyone needs any further information on the Civic Chorus program. Siaka will be offering several programs during the holidays. The first is the Siaka Happy Holidays, and through December eleventh, or starting December eleventh through January fifth, adoptions for cats and kittens are five dollars, and dogs one year and older are reduced by fifty percent. Siaka can be contacted at eight-zero-three-three-three-zero-one. Siaka will also be offering on Saturday, December eighth, from eleven to one p.m., their Santa Paws is Coming to Town program at the Lazy Dog Restaurant in Downey. Again, you can contact Siaka directly to learn more about that program. Pathways Volunteer Hospice has their Light Up a Life program. A donation of twenty-five dollars provides one light on the hospice tree, and the name of the person being honored or memorialized is listed on the Light Up a Life scrolls displayed by the tree. For more information, Pathways can be contacted at five-six-two-five-three-one-three-zero-zero-three-one, or you can visit their website at pathwayshospice.org. Our Children Holiday Party in the Parks and Recreation Department will take place on Saturday, December fifteenth, from ten-thirty a.m. to one p.m. at Sims Park. Visits from, with Santa will be from ten-forty-five a.m. to twelve-forty-five p.m. More information on that, the Parks and Recreation Office at Sims Park can be contacted at five-six-two-eight-six-six-seven-five-one-zero. And of course, our tree lighting ceremony will take place Friday, December seventh, at seven-thirty p.m. right here in downtown at Friendship Square. Any information on that program, we can contact our department as well. Some other programs that are offered, we have our Holiday Shoppers Express. This is a dial-a-ride program for dial-a-ride members during the holidays. It's offered to Lakewood Mall for dial-a-ride members to get some shopping done. It'll be offered on Thursday, November thirtieth, and Friday, December eighth, from ten a.m. to four p.m. Empire Transportation can be contacted directly for reservations, five-six-two-eight-six-five-seven-four-three-three. And then, of course, at our parks, at our program parks, we'll have daily activities throughout the holidays while the kids are out of school. At our parks, spontaneous activities, supervision with our staff as well, and those hours are here December twenty-first, three-thirty to five-thirty p.m., December twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and January second through fourth, eleven a.m. to three p.m. Those are all the items in our presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any comments you might have.
Any questions to Mr. Milana?
I do, sir.
Go right ahead.
I do, Mr. Milana, thank you. PJ, first of all, thank you for doing this. I think it makes it easier for our community to be able to determine what programs maybe they'd be interested in. I think we, based on what you've presented tonight, I think there's, it's apparent to me that there's something for just about everybody, right? Different tastes, different availabilities. Of note, I did wanna, I do want to ask if we could put this on our website like we've done in the past.
Yeah, no problem.
And then the last thing was just for, for those out there that, that haven't been a part of the Bellflower, the toy and food drive that, that was presented in one of the first few slides, if you've never been a part of that, it really is an amazing experience to not only give, but when you go out there and you actually deliver these items to these families in need, frankly, it's really humbling, and it kind of reminds you why it is that we have the celebrations, that we have the sense of community. So if you haven't done it, it'd be available on these select Saturdays. I absolutely encourage you to go out there. I won't be there for the Thanksgiving one this year. I'll be at another event with the Congresswoman, but I'll be there for, for the one in December, so. But I just want to say thank you for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Milana, can you bring back the first slide? I want to piggyback on Mr. Garza's question, the very first one where you have two dates for Thanksgiving. So if somebody wants to volunteer for Thanksgiving and Christmas, what exactly is the work involved?
Between, I believe it's, and I have Michelle here just in case I get this wrong, but I believe it's from eight to eleven. At the Volunteer Center, they would meet. If they're able to drive, they will deliver baskets and food to the recipients. If they're not able to drive, we have sorting systems in place and loading. We have a complete assembly line set up for people to help. And cars are coming in and out, coming back for second trips to, to get items to take out to the individuals that are receiving the baskets.
So it's more about four hours on those, on those two dates?
Yes.
Okay, very good. My other question is, do we still have the Adopt a Family program?
The adopt, for, for these programs?
You have this program?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Yes. And we contact Michelle specifically regarding that if, if someone wanted to identify or adopt a family, and her contact information is right there again.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You answered all my questions. Thank you.
Well, I'm good. Great presentation. It's good to see all those wonderful things the city does for our residents in town. Good job. All right, as I said, Mr. Stewart, public comments.
Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium and be recognized by the mayor and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
All right, this is the time. Anybody in the audience wishing to come up and say a piece to us?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Josh Murray. I'm here on behalf of Clifton Brackenseek Library, nine-nine-four-five Flower Street. I'd like to make everybody aware of a great activity that we're having about talking sticks. So on Monday, November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from four-thirty to five-thirty p.m., join us as we celebrate Native American Heritage Months as we create our very own talking sticks. A talking stick is a tool used in many Native American traditions when a group is called together. The individual holding the talking stick is allowed to speak, and each talking stick is unique and distinct. So I hope that everyone's able to join us on November nineteenth from four-thirty to five-thirty p.m. at Clifton Brackenseek Library. I'll be leaving some of these flyers here at City Hall for anyone interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any, we're gonna, oh. Hi.
Good afternoon, uh, good evening.
Good afternoon.
Honorable Mayor and honorable council members and invaluable staff. I am School, Bellflower School Board Member-elect, Renita Armstrong. On August tenth, two thousand and eighteen, I preemptively completed my candidacy application and statement knowing that with a successful campaign and voter turnout, that I would serve the community within the Bellflower Unified School District boundaries for the next four years. I want to thank the voters that came out to exercise their right to choose, and choosing Renita Armstrong is the equivalent to choosing positive change. I will work for the betterment of all families, Bellflower, Lakewood, Cerritos. We each hold an important component to this trifle relationship. Again, Honorable Mayor Ray Dutton and honorable council members, thank you for placing your faith and your trust in Renita Armstrong. Relationships matter. Your vote matters, and all, all of our voices matter. Again, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to come forward? Good evening, John.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and ladies and gentlemen. A couple items I wish to bring up this evening, and basically, the Sheriff's Department is doing pretty darn good, taking care of matters. They have a new model. It's called Home, Home for the Holidays when they pick 'em up. So, uh, at least they'll have a place to stay for sixty days, maybe. Now, the big thing here is, I'm wondering, on Lander Boulevard where we had the hazmat cleanup, that the county was taking care of Janus Lawn, I'm wondering if that cleanup is done and over with, or if there's still more hazardous stuff to pick up? And those gates were open for the last three, four days, and now it changed back across them again, so there's people going in and out.
It's cleaned up. It has been cleaned up.
And it looks like a real mess in there.
Well, but it's clean.
You know, because my concern there is, especially looking at the fires in California now, with all that brush and junk in there, and you got that trailer parked real close to it. So, uh, that was one of my concerns. The other thing is the homeless. You know, I always beat on this thing, but do you realize we have more homeless in Bellflower than Norwalk and Paramount put together? We really do. And they're living on the bike path, and it's some young kids that are going to school that have no place to stay, too, and they're having to camp out and do their homework or whatever and still go to school, and this homeless thing is so far out of hand, it's pathetic. And that brings up an item that really irritates me, and I know there aren't any of you four who'll even say anything to it. The way you clear up some of this problem in the city of Bellflower should stand up to the plate and join in with Orange County on this sanctuary city nonsense, because now all this is gonna do is create unemployment, thievery, bring all kinds of god knows what diseases into this country again that's been eradicated at one time, and nobody's looking at that. Putting people out of a job. I know that the, the government and the state does have laws on the books about employing illegal people, but nobody does a thing about it. I hate seeing government involved, but it's time they got involved and take the employer who hires one that's here illegally and fine him ten thousand dollars for each employee. It's time to teach the business owner a lesson, and that's where the problem lies, is the business owner, not the poor guy looking for a job and trying to survive. It's the business owner. I'm a prime example. I'm a business owner. Some of you are business owners up there, and I think you hate it as much as I do when government gets involved in your business, because they sure know how to screw things up. But it's time that something was done, and we've got all these illustrious council members in different cities, the mayor of LA, who to me is worthless, some of the people on staff up there, I'm not gonna name them as much as I'd like to, don't belong as elected officials, and do nothing about it. They promote this. Unfortunately, now we're saddled with another idiot with the train to nowhere. He's going away, but his predecessor's picking it up. He's just as bad. Gavin Newsom, how in the hell he got elected? Now, the other thing that I would like to bring up, which is on a positive side, the train thing here, which is gonna be built and going in place before the Olympics. It's got its good side. It should bring some businesses into Bellflower. It should bring some tourist trade into Bellflower, but we gotta address this homeless problem, too. We gotta address this illegal problem, too. I'm not afraid to stand up to the plate and say, hey, it's time to stop it. There's import and deport, and that's the way you gotta look at it. Now, the last thing is this dial-a-ride that the city has, the bus service. I think it's time to start looking down the road, because once you get this train coming in through here, which connects downtown LA, the rail station, to Anaheim, and Bellflower's a stop, what are you gonna do for transportation if somebody gets off? Your bus, right now, does not start until nine o'clock in the morning. Everybody's already at work. Kids are supposed to be in school. I thought they rode the bus, but the bus don't start till nine o'clock. Now, if you get this train coming through and you get business picking up and stuff, you need some sort of transportation system, and if this party can't supply it that you're contracted with, you need to find somebody else, and you need to readjust your hours. I mean, most business people are heading for work usually at six o'clock in the morning or seven, and you can't chop it off at five o'clock and leave somebody stranded trying to figure out, well, I gotta walk ten miles to get home. So it's time to have a vision for a change, which the city hasn't had for decades, and start looking down the road of where I'm going with this and what can I do to improve it. I've always looked down the road. I don't look at just today. I'm looking down the road five, ten years, and that's where your mind has to be set. And we've got one hell of an opportunity with that train stopping here in Bellflower to really change the demographics of this town and really improve it. So I wish you would at least look at this dial-a-ride situation. Now, I do know you can, if you're handicapped or over fifty-five, you can play with dial-a-ride or the transit system, but what good is it to have a system of that nature when you've got people that want to work? And I've talked to a certain council member in here about it, a young lady that is bringing up two kids because her deadbeat husband skipped, and she's got medical through the state for those two kids, which is fine. I have no problem with it. And she wants to work. She doesn't want to be on welfare, but for her to get to work and take her kids to a place for the day where they take care of the kids, and then she comes back home with them, she can't function with this type of a bus system, and personally, I think the dial-a-ride should accommodate somebody like that, which this city, according to the people that handle the dial-a-ride here, don't. They say, well, she needs to be handicapped, or she needs to be fifty-five or older, so we can't help her. Now, that is a hell of a slap in the face, especially when somebody's trying to get ahead in this world. in this world. And a young, I think she's twenty-six years old, raising two young kids on her own with no help from nobody. So, I would like you to see if you can readjust the bus schedule, because this way, she's trying to work, actually, she's working two part-time jobs, trying to make a go of it. She doesn't wanna be on welfare. So, I give her a lot of credit. So, I'd like you to see if you can do something like that. The other thing is, I would like to get with the planning department again, because I really liked the deal when you put a deal together for this solar problem, which everybody was getting shafted on. There's a couple more quirks that need to be cleaned up, and it's to the advantage of the homeowner, to the contractors involved, and to the city. It protects everybody. A homeowner should not be allowed to pull a permit as owner-builder for electrical, plumbing, which is gasoline, gas pipes, and mechanical. That's the three items that you can blow the house up or burn it down. You're gonna let the homeowner pull it, and then he's gonna find a handyman out of Home Depot's parking lot. I think something needs to be sent to Sacramento and have this changed around, because the winner on the whole thing is the homeowner, the city, and the contractor. Everybody's protected that way. So, that's the only three quirks I ran across after I, after I talked to the city staff on putting this package together with Steve, and Steve's intelligence there on it, and I think that we could do something, but that's what I would like to see done. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. [inaudible].
If you don't mind, just need, just a couple of comments. First of all, for Mr. Butts, one of the items with the train is that when we start going down the road with this effort, one of the items that we're gonna be doing is synchronizing and providing, creating synergies between all modes of transportation, so that they all interlink into that train station we're gonna have at Bellflower Boulevard. So, that's, that's already part of, that's in the works, and staff and metro, city staff and metro staff have started working on that. So, we don't know what's gonna be here in ten years from now, but whatever it is, that's part of the plan, is to, to make sure that they're all synchronized and they all work in unison, so, but thank you for pointing that out. The last thing I wanted to do is just, I wanted to thank Ms. Armstrong for coming here and introducing herself to our council, to our community. I congratulate you on your victory, and I look forward to working with you in your new role on the board. And if there's anything that we, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree that we can be of help with, please let us know. We're, I'm really excited about having you on that board, so, again, congratulations to you. And I want to also congratulate Ms. Ramirez, Sanchez Ramirez, on her victory as well that night, as well as Mr. Richard Downing for his victory. Lastly, I'd like to thank, I wasn't able to be there at the last board meeting that took place last week, I was actually working that night, so I wasn't able to be there, but I definitely want to thank Dr. Sewell Hessen, as well as Hannah Hannigan Flores for their service to our community throughout these past months and years, so, I just wanted to make that comment on, on record. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else wishing to come forward during the public comments?
I do.
Come on down.
I'm Dr. Kirsten Robinson, I'm a teacher in the Bellflower Unified School District, and I was one of the people who helped support Renita Armstrong getting elected. And what I wanted to comment, kind of piggyback on what the gentleman before me spoke about the vision moving forward, one of the things that we've been working on in our school district is really changing the trajectory of where we're going. And I've been a teacher in the district for eighteen years, and I know some of you a little bit by face, but mostly it's from seeing you giving awards to other people. And one of the things I'd like to see as we move forward is a little bit more involvement. Bellflower Unified School District has us in the center, we're the only district in the state that does. And us isn't just the parents, and just the students, and just the teachers, it's the board, it's our superintendent, but it's also our communities. The two most important things when people are looking to buy a home in a community is safety, which is current right now, which was addressed, but it's also the education that the children will receive. People will spend a whole lot of money for a really tiny home in a place where their children are going to be educated. We now have a new superintendent, I see her sitting in the room, I see her in all kinds of places. She shows up in places just like a typical, regular person, and I'd like to see that from some of you, showing up at our sites and our schools, so that you realize what's going on in your district, because the only people that can make it better are those of us who are most involved. You make decisions about what happens financially in this area. I love seeing that you have sheriffs that are gonna serve our students and our community. I'd like to see you more visible, I'd like you to come read in my classroom. I'd like to see you at board meetings, I haven't seen you, and I sit in at a lot of them. But I'd like our community to get closer, and I mean the governing boards of our community. I really value that we've got some voice on our, on our board that represents the ethnicity in our district, and also represents Bellflower, because that longstanding have been most of our, most of our board members have been Lakewood residents, so I think it's important that Bellflower be represented as well. But our vision in our district, and I love this, because our children are our future, and our superintendent changed our statement for our district that we build futures. And I love that yours is growing together. So, I'd like to see us come together as a community, to grow together, to build the futures of our, of our students, because our students are the ones who are gonna be sitting in your seats eventually, and they're gonna be making the decisions about what happens in this community. So, I appreciate the commitment that you've made, and I'd like you to partner with our superintendent and our school board to make our school district even better than it already is. You've got great bones, and you have a lot of stakeholders. You have a voice too, your stakeholders, and you're showing up and being more involved will change the trajectory of this district. Our district has the capacity to be comparable to a Los Alamos Unified School District. What we have that they don't have is diversity and authenticity. And what I'd like to see us do is move our students to gather the same education and move to the same places that the students in those districts are, that represent what the entire world looks like. So, I would really like to encourage you to join forces with our new school board member and with our new superintendent. They're both new, and they're taking us to different places, and I'd like you to get on that bus and go for it with us, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Come on, Joe.
Let me go last, Gary.
I thought you were gonna be last.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Robin Snow, and I am on behalf of the Bellflower Family Lions and the Bellflower Noon Lions, and our tenth annual Christmas in Hollywood sports this year. We are going to be hosting on December, Sunday, December the sixteenth. We are planning on eight thousand children this year. We have, we've, we've talked to Karen Connections, about five hundred of those, and any other community outreaches that can, you know, come to us, we'd like to be able to help them also. And at this point, if anybody has a spare one hundred dollar bill, they can donate to the cause. It can bring six toys to a child, or six toys for six children, and a pancake breakfast, and a food bag, and a visit with Santa. So, we are out there looking for donations, and we're also out there looking for a good time. And we have a lot of things planned this year that we haven't done in the past, so I'm really looking forward to this program this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else? Come on, Joe, you better hurry.
Don't hurry, I've got the rest of my life.
That was a good one.
Honorable Mayor and members of council, I beg your indulgence tonight, because I'm gonna say it like it is.
You always do, Joe.
Right. First, I wanted to, Dan made a comment about the Christmas lighting on December seventh. I'd also like you guys to mention, remember Pearl Harbor, that's the same day. That was the day that changed America and the world for the good, at Pearl Harbor. I mean, it woke America up. So, mention that, if you will, for the veterans that can't speak anymore.
And we always do it on the same Friday night, and it fell on December seventh to your recognition.
Yeah, December seventh is Pearl Harbor Day.
No, I get it.
Okay. And if you guys talking about a railroad, how about, let's say about overhead railroad, so we don't have no traffic jams in the city. It used to be a thing when I was on council, that we, we'd go for this here, I can't think of the name of it anymore, but Magleva, I believe it was, maglevitation overhead of the tracks, so that there would be no interruption of street traffic that way, and that still ought to be pushed, because that's silent, it doesn't go by anybody's houses, goes overhead, and it's a modern, you'll be way into the twenty-fifth century then. I mean, you'll be way ahead of the curve. Think about that. Okay. I'd like to speak here tonight for those who cannot speak anymore. I mean, as a comrade in arms to those brave, true Americans who gave up their lives in preserving the freedoms of all people in America in World War II. The war where America, with help from our allies, saved this entire world, this entire world from domination by evil men and forces bent on conquering the world for their own special interests. That is my true analysis of what this war did to save the world today for USA, which to me means "us," and the "A" stands for "all." So, USA to me means "us all," put it down in plain language. You and me, and at the end of the "N," for all of the good people of the world, US all, us all. I have since watched the slow, but sure destruction of America since about twenty years ago, I guess, and it concerns me very much to see it happen to all my children, grandchildren, families, gift children and families, and true Americans. I want this country to survive from what is happening within our borders. All our cause should be the survival of America. Here's what is happening without good concern by many true Americans. First off, is the overwhelming invasion of America by foreign illegal forces from other countries, mainly through Mexico, our approved neighbor, supposedly neighbor. When twenty-two million illegal aliens can enter your country illegally and cause rotten changes, and is solely proving so to be working in their behalf of changing a once-great America into what they're having now today, it's not good. When caravans of, from one four thousand to fifteen thousand people demand, they don't ask, they demand and get, they wanna come in, they're gonna demand to come in, and get, or they'll get in line legally to enter, then this invasion is working, and America will cease to be a free nation in about twenty-five years, if that continues. Such forces of the foreign illegal invasion will tear down our once-a-great America. Illegal immigration has broken the back of America by overwhelm, overwhelm, and overwhelm, and can change it for our, for our people, translated by a businessman in our town here, Jose Pacico, who clearly defined that term to me when I was elected to the city council. And he says to me, what are you going to do for our people, Joe? I says to him, what do you mean "our people," Jose? He puts his hands on and says, "Mexican-American." Oh, I say, you're concerned about Mexican-Americans. Okay. I replied back to him, I'm going to do my best for all the people in this town, nobody And that was witnessed, that phrase, by Richard Downing. He was standing a couple feet away from us, still talking out in the lobby there, and he comes and he says, "What do, what do you want Joe to do for you, Jose special?" He said, "I'm part Indian, you don't see me asking Joe for any special favor." So, that's the people that are invading our borders, our people. They're not true Americans, they're foreigners, and they're doing it illegally. They didn't come here like my mom and pop did, two thousand miles across the water to come here and try to become a citizen and become a true American. And they did it legally. They stood in line, and they, they truly changed themselves to become Americans, rather than try to change the country to become what they had left. And the Democratic Party today aids and abets this takeover of America by not wanting no walls for our borders. Keep in mind, people, everybody in practically in the United States has a wall or a fence around our house. And why do they got that fence or wall around their house? To protect their property. Why can't we have a fence or a wall to protect America? We can't cover our own land unless we put our forces there. We're protecting the borders of many foreign countries, yet we can't protect our own border. That's a sad state of affairs as a GI who served in the war, and the guys that gave their lives, they'd be appalled if they were alive today. I, and I'm not just knocking the Democratic Party, because I used to be a Democrat until Bill Clinton got in office, then I changed for the better. I became a Republican, and a true American, always was. Problem is that these invader governments, invaders, don't want to change themselves for America, like my parents and legal true immigrants from other foreign countries did. They want to change America to suit their cause, meaning America has to change for them. That is what is now happening in America. So many groups, by liberals, lefties, they want to change what's right for all to what's best for them now. Sons of illegal immigrants and English-speaking immigrants that came to America from Europe and elsewhere, outside the country, are the ones that made America great. And they gave, they gave up their, they gave up their lives for all of us in the world today. Another example is putting on voting system in all languages to allow voting today. In my parents' time, and when I entered the service, you had to have a knowledge of English to be able to be a voter and a citizen to boot, meaning you had to wait your turn in the line and become a citizen by our lawful process. Now, today, you have to put the ballot in so many, you gotta have so many languages now. That ain't America, true America, that's foreignization of America, and it ain't good for your children and the future of America. I don't care who you are, what color you are. Now politicians, and I gotta admit, I'm picking mostly on the Democratic Party tonight, because they're willing to sell our country down for power, their ego, and the money benefits. My true America was never for sale, and never will be as long as I'm alive. I know a lot of people will call this racism, a new tactic to attack anyone saying something everyone, anyone does not like. If that's the case, now we are allowing legal foreigners to vote. How long do you think we will have a good, true America if the foreigners vote? You know why? They're gonna vote their way of what they left. They want to make this their country, and to heck with you. and the heck with you. The foreignization of America proceeding in the downfall of America. If this is racism, then about true racism for America. May God bless America always and God bless those heroes that gave up their lives for all of us.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Well, Joe wanted to be last, Peter.
Oh.
Ah.
Yeah, come on. Couple of questions. Do we really have the most homeless people in Bellflower? That doesn't sound right.
I don't know.
We don't know.
But I doubt it.
I doubt it. Couple of things also. She said, the teacher from Bellflower High School, that she wants to see a Bellflower to get more involved with the school district. Did we also get sued when we did that about several years ago?
No, I agree with her.
Yeah? How much can we reach out before there's a separation? Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, I'd like to thank Mr. Garcia. Because of him, we knew I'm from, elected. You mind?
That is not the case, but.
Yeah, but, oh, yeah. Oh, it's nice to know that Mr. Drake came down and took somebody else's death for him to show up in a city council meeting. That's, so I'm gonna wish all you guys a lot, really good health, you know? I know you're losing weight. Are you down to 20 yet, Mr. O'Meara?
I'm getting there.
Getting there.
None of 20 to go.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, that's a lot, but you know.
All right. You got the bill in for me in the closer. Oh, no, we got another one. Joe, you missed it by two.
I hadn't planned to speak. Sally Havas, Assemblymember Sally Havas, retired. I found out that retired means re-retired, tired all over again. Anyway.
Because I kept working afterwards. I just wanted to commend the council and staff because I, having been on a governing board myself and...
Oh, it wasn't on. Well, that's okay, it wasn't worth hearing anyway. No, anyway. Having been on a governing board myself and having attended a lot of public meetings and forums and so forth, I really commend you for the manner in which you allow the citizens to come up and speak. And I've seen some very terrible examples of public servants cutting people off and being rude and I just want to commend you for that, how you allow. I know you're sitting up there and some of the things that are said are exactly you, how you feel and some of the things are like, you don't feel anything like that. But you manage to keep your composure and you, it's wonderful. You know, I, I really think it's great. Maybe many people haven't seen as many boards as I have in city councils.
So we're deserving a medal tonight?
Yes. If I had one, I'd give it to you. If I had one, I would. Yes.
Thank you.
I, I just, I empathize. Okay, that's, that's all I had to say. I'm not running for anything.
Thank you, Sally. It's good seeing you. All right. Going once, going twice. We're moving on. Okay. Item 11A, Mr. Stewart?
This is a public hearing. It's consideration of possible action in Dr. Public Hearing to consider adopting Resolution Number 18-70, Resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute agreement file number 626.2 in a form approved by the City Attorney with Boisant Moysat, DBA Bose Cigar Lounge, to provide a grant to pay processing fees for the conditional use permit for an upgraded alcohol license at Bose Cigar Lounge 16515 Bellflower Boulevard per the city's Economic Development Business Assistance Plan. And I believe we have Ms. Jun to make the staff report for you.
Before we get into staff report, I'm gonna have to recuse myself of this item because I own property within 500 feet of this address. So I'm gonna leave the room. And Mayor Protem Sentaines will take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, Mr. Delalanga, it's yours.
Thank you. Ms. Jun is gonna provide the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Good evening, members of the city council. This item before you tonight is an application to the city's business assistance program. The application was submitted by Mr. Bo Moysat, the owner of Bose Cigar Lounge on 16515 Bellflower Boulevard. And he is specifically requesting downtown business alcohol licensing assistance, which is through the program. This assistance will absorb city processing fees for his conditional use permit application for an upgraded alcohol license. The fees that may be absorbed are estimated at $3,500, which includes a $3,408 processing fee as well as legal review fees. Sufficient funds to cover these expenses are available in the Economic Development Department budget. Mr. Moysat initially opened Bose Cigar Lounge with a Type 42 beer and wine license, but determined that the cigars would be better paired with specialty liquors available under a Type 48 license. He believes this offering would result in the long-term sustainability of his business in Bellflower. His CUP application for a Type 48 was submitted in October and unanimously approved by the Planning Commission on November 5. Economic Development staff has reviewed Mr. Moysat's request for assistance, which included a completed application, business plan, and a commitment to cross-promote the city of Bellflower in future marketing efforts. Staff has determined that Mr. Moysat qualifies for this assistance. Staff recommends the city council open the public hearing, take documentary and testimonial evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 1870. This concludes my report and staff is available to answer any questions as well as the applicant who's in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Catherine. I have a couple of questions. In the staff report, you mentioned that the total assistance is 6,000. Now it's down to 3,500. It's good, but I just want to understand why it went down.
Absolutely. We just kind of estimate on the high side in case additional fees are required in the review of the CUP application.
Okay.
But on average, we are expecting about $3,500, at least from Mr. Moysat's case.
I see. Okay, in the, in the portion of the downtown business alcohol licensing assistance, that's part of the downtown business assistance. Has there been any previous applicants for this particular assistance?
Not for this assistance. Mr. Moysat is our very first applicant.
Very first one?
Mm-hmm.
In this particular portion?
Yes.
Okay. Also, can you, right now they have a Type 42 liquor license?
Beer and wine license.
Beer and wine. And then, so they want to upgrade to Type 48?
Yes.
And in the staff report, you mentioned that they'll be buying a Type 47, which is a general liquor license, but it is to be consumed with food, right? That's 47?
Actually.
47 is for restaurant, correct? No, I'm getting there.
Right.
So 47 is with food and then 48 is general without food. So, and then the staff report mentioned that your, your plan is to buy a 47 perm license and then convert that into a Type 48. So a couple of questions. One is, is Type 47 license readily available in the market?
It is readily available, but they would have to apply with the ABC and, and buy one on the market.
So it's, it's out there?
It is out there.
Okay, so what is it to convert that into 4? Once they buy it, I'm sure they're gonna pay for it, right?
Yes.
So what does it take to convert that into Type 48?
I believe our consultant, Liz O'Neill, could.
Okay, maybe later on. Okay, so that's one of my questions. Okay. All right, that's all I have for now. Mr. Garcia, any question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just one point of clarification. Thanks for the staff report to start off. I noticed that in, under the resolution language, under page number four, section two, on the top, I think is the third line. It seems like there's something missing. It says not to exceed grant for Bose Cigar Lounge 6,000.
Oh, I believe it should be corrected to be Bose Cigar Lounge for $6,000.
Okay.
So we'll make that correction before getting them executed.
Great. That completes my comments, Mr. Protem.
Thank you. Mr. Coops, any question?
Not at this time.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Coop, seconded by Councilmember Garcia. Without objection, that will be the order. At this time, I think we'll let get the applicant the opportunity to address us first and then you can ask questions later. Bo, how are you doing?
Good, thank you.
Very good.
Again, we, we have a license 42 and we feel that a full liquor license will help us, our business, and improve the business as well as the sales tax and so forth. We've been in business in Bellflower for almost five years. We never had any incidents. We run a very, very, very good business and tight business. And that's pretty much it. I mean, you know, I'm sure you have. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. Well, that's all I have to say.
So how much increase in sales do you anticipate for 48?
We anticipate between 25 and 40% increase.
Okay.
No, no, it's not a bar as we know it. It's not, we don't open at 6 o'clock in the morning. We're gonna close at 2 o'clock in the morning. It's, the cigar smokers, we're not gonna have, hardly have anybody walking up the street and coming ordering a drink. Our cigar smokers will complement their cigars with single malt, with cognac. It's not, you're not gonna have people having 10 shots and then getting to their car. No, that's not, that's not the way cigar smokers are. Cigar smokers like, they go there, stay two, three, four hours, one or two cigars, one nice nifter of single malt or anything like that, and then go home. Most of them wait out traffic.
Okay.
So it's not a bar, the traditional.
Not a typical bar?
No, no.
It's a, it's a smoking lounge with serving liquor?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any question for Bo?
Bo, have you read the staff report and you have any questions of us?
No, no, no. I totally agree with all the condition that were put forth, the planning.
Even the extra condition?
The planning department was wonderful, very, very professional.
And what about the koi pond?
The koi pond, I think we're gonna have to compromise. We, I'm glad you mentioned that. How about, how about a mural?
What condition is that koi pond?
It's an inside joke.
I just, I want to make sure it's there.
We're willing to, to.
You'll, you'll work with this.
Actually, I'm working with a couple of world-renowned artists to paint a mural.
Mr. Elrundel or?
No. He's one of them.
Oh, that's the next item, that's the next item.
Thank you, Bo, that's all I have.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Garcia?
I'll come, thank you.
But Ms. O'Neill, I think my question, can you answer my question about, I just want to understand the conversion from 47 to, I'm just curious. From 47, because it seems like 47 is available out there in the market.
That's correct.
And then you're gonna buy it on behalf of Bo and then you're gonna convert that into 4? So what does it take to convert that into 48?
It's just paperwork at the ABC level.
Oh, really? That's easy.
Yeah, it's just a form that the ABC approves, the conversion of the Type 47 to the 48. It's the ABC's way of controlling the types of licenses that are on the market. And a Type 48, because it does not require service of food, is a more sensitive license type. And so you usually don't find them available the way you do a 47. But under the right circumstances, such as this, the ABC would convert it as long as the CUP supports it, which it does.
If you were to buy 47, Type 47 now, what's the asking price? What's the market price at this point?
We just had the lottery and so typically the prices go up right after the lottery because they're more in demand for everyone who did not win one in the license or in the lottery. So they're between 95,000 and 100,000, inclusive of finder's fees and broker's fees.
Okay. Very good. Okay, thank you.
Is your intention to run out and do that now or are you gonna wait and see if you can do the lottery next time it comes up? Or is it?
No, we would.
All right, thank you.
That's it?
For now, we'll have, you may have questions and we're gonna call you back later on.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Bo.
John Paul Drayer, Bellflower. I signed in earlier. I guess it was like a car show that something, Sally Havas and I went to and we went into Bose for the first time. And then we're in there and Ron Snoblinger greets us with a cigar and welcomes us to Bose and we had a night, got a tour of the facility. It was very nice. I, I have a restaurant, a Mexican seafood restaurant in Paramount and we're going through the process, a similar process so we can, I guess we can sell, I guess, 30% of our proceeds can be for beer and wine with our restaurant food. And so I was just wondering if, also we had to find out before we could apply if there's any of the special licenses available before we could proceed. And so I don't know if that's already, they know for sure that these are available, you know, before going on for the process because we had to confirm that before we could proceed. So I don't know if that's already happened. Thank you.
Well, as you heard from our consultant, they can easily buy Type 47 and then go through the process of converting it to 48, so. All right, any other question?
Could you help out with the direct? Could you help with the license?
All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coop, seconded by Councilmember Garcia to close the pub. Well, I was, I was calling. I was calling to speak.
It seems to me that if we're gonna help one business, we're gonna help them all from now on out?
Joe, there is a certain criteria in helping businesses in downtown Bellflower.
Everybody's eligible, Mr. Stewart.
Do we need another cigar place and a beer joint?
No, 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 Mr. Seveco.
Bar lounge, whatever we want to call it?
No, no.
There's plenty in town already?
It's not, we're not having a public hearing regarding the cigar lounge. It is, basically they're asking for assistance for, to change their liquor license from Type 42 to Type 48.
It still involves money.
That's what's in the public hearing right now.
It still involves money, right?
Yes. They're asking for.
How much money is?
They're asking for $3,500 and they're investing over $95,000 to get the license. So in the grand scheme of things, the contribution by the city is very tiny compared to what they're gonna be putting into this business. 95,000 versus 3,500.
Well, you can start that trend, you're gonna have to help every new business that comes in town then, right? They have, they have the same privilege, you're gonna treat them all the same.
They, everybody is eligible to apply under the same benefits that Mr. Moysat applied under, yes. And as long as the funding is available, we will assist them.
And you're gonna wonder why you got broke.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Mr. Garcia?
I believe the hearing was closed already. Do we need to reopen it to?
No, it wasn't called because there was no vote.
Okay, okay, great.
So I caught it on time.
Clarification, okay.
For the record.
Perfect.
I didn't call for the vote, so I didn't.
Okay.
I would like to clear one thing up that I don't think Mr. Seveco understands. In order to start a business or have a business, sometimes you have to reach out for help from a city. There's very few businesses ever come into a city without the city giving something to them. Because if you want to attract a business, you gotta help it out. Now to call it a booze joint or something like that, I think is, isn't right. You people up there know what it is. I've never been in it, but I know what it is. This gentleman is only asking for a lousy 3,500 bucks and I wouldn't bat an eye. I'd write the check now and give it to him. Because what you're doing is promoting business in this town and you're doing it in the right fashion. And thank God, about six years back, we finally got people on the city council that had some brains about them. Instead of shining businesses off and shaking them down for the money they can get out of them, at least we have a group here now that is willing to help a gentleman like this promote his business. And so like I said, I would tell Tay Reed to write the check now and give it to him.
Anyone else who want to speak about this item? I guess, Mr. Moysat, there's no need for you to respond. There's no question unless you want to make any additional comments. Coming up.
Basically, what I want to say is a cigar lounge is not a tobacco store. We don't have kids running around, loud music, smoking hookah. They're all adults. I mean.
I mean, my age, and I'm only thirty-eight years old. No, seriously, it's not, it's, it's, there's a misconception that a cigar lounge is, you're going to have underage kids smoking hookah, maybe smoking something not legal. It, it is not the case. If you've never been to my place, I suggest that you come in. If you don't want to come in, go online and look at the pictures, see what it looked like. It's a very, very, very nice place. And by the way, a cigar magazine named us fifth best in the country and number one in California. Bellflower has a number one cigar lounge in California. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And Bo, I always love to ask you this.
Yes.
What, what university did you graduate from?
I'm sorry?
What, where did you graduate from university?
What university?
Yes.
I went to Cambridge.
See, now we've got a Cambridge graduate in our midst, on the boulevard, doing a wonderful business.
Thank you.
I'm proud you're here.
Thank you, thank you.
Just for the record, I don't smoke, but I've been to both lounge, and it is quite impressive. So it's not for cheap stuff, the good quality cigars. So I'm not trying to advertise this business, but it's good quality.
And Mr. Mayor Protem?
All right.
If you don't mind, just, just an additional comment, his business is top-notch, and there's a reason why Bellflower in the cigar world is recognized as a destination. We have people that come from outside of our, our city and outside of our region specifically because of the ranking that he has. So I, I feel that it's an asset to our community, so I just wanted to thank you for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. All right, there was a motion by Councilmember Coops, second by Councilmember Garza, to close the public hearing, finally. All right, without objection, that will be the order. Gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to give Bo the thirty-five hundred to execute agreement number file, number six-two-six-point-two, in a form approved by the city attorney, for Bo's cigar lounge to provide the funding for the activity of a new liquor license, an additional liquor license.
With a friendly amendment on, under section two that we noted.
Resolution eighteen dash seventy?
Right, that we'll get the verbiage right in that paragraph.
Okay, but resolution eighteen dash seventy though?
Great.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Coops, a second by Councilmember Garza, for the city council, the city of Bellflower to approve resolution eighteen dash seventy. Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Santanis?
Aye.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, you have it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I just want to add real fast, and I should have jumped in earlier, we're not giving Mr. Louis thirty-five hundred dollars, we're reimbursing him for fees paid to the city, is what this is.
Yeah.
It's a rebate, yeah.
It's a tiny, tiny amount compared to his investment. Let the record reflect that Mayor Dunham is back.
Okay, ordinances and resolutions for consideration, we have none of those, but we do have a item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart, about art.
This is consideration of art in public places proposals for the Garden House, one-zero-zero-three-zero through one-zero-one-zero-eight Ramona Street, and Cortabella, one-zero-two-five-zero Artisha Boulevard projects. And I believe we have, Rowena is here to make the presentation to us.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you is a proposal to install two public art pieces at two different locations. Both projects are from the same developer. The image before you shows the two projects. We have Woodruff Avenue here, we have Garden House located west of Woodruff Avenue, we also have Cortabella east of Woodruff Avenue. And the distance between the two projects approximately a thousand, a thousand feet. Little background on the project, Cortabella, located at one-zero-two-five-zero Artisha Boulevard, was approved in 2014. It's a thirty-unit condominium project, and the construction permits were issued in January 2018. At that time, no artwork was required for the project. Garden House, located at one-hundred-thirty through ten-ten-eight Ramona Street, was approved in 2016. This is a project that's twenty-four unit or twenty-four single-family attached residential project, which includes six live-work project. The construction permit for this project was issued, were issued in December 2017, and this project required public arts, installation of public arts. Both are currently under construction, and as mentioned earlier, it's from the same developer. Per BMC chapter three-point-thirty-two, the project Garden House is required to install art piece, an art piece, or payment of in lieu contribution. Based on the project valuation for the project, the minimum required amount for the art piece would be at one percent of the project valuation, which amounts to forty-nine thousand three-hundred-and-ten. This request is unique in that rather than allocating the entire budget for Garden House only, the developer is requesting that that amount be split between Cortabella and Garden House. And the total amount of the proposed art pieces is fifty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-one dollars, which is more than what's the minimum required. Before you is the site plan of Cortabella. You have Artisha Boulevard to the north here. It includes a public plaza, and within that public plaza is where the art piece is being proposed for Cortabella, which is referred to as Refugio. Shown here is a landscape and also seating area, and on top of that is where the structure or the sculpture would be installed. The material for the sculpture is corten steel. The sculpture itself is about eight feet in height, four feet in width, and the thickness of it is about twelve inches. The sculpture sits in a half-inch-thick steel base plate that measures four feet by four feet, and the combined weight of the base and the sculpture is about a thousand pounds. This is a partial site plan for the Garden House. We have Ramona Street and Artisha Boulevard. The proposed sculpture is to be located within the common area, right here. And that art piece is referred to as Tree of Lives. It will be sitting on a concrete base about two feet in height, and the actual art piece is about seven feet and six inches in height, which five and a half feet in width, and again, twelve inches in thickness, same material, corten steel. And it will be sitting on a steel base plate, half-inch-thick, four feet by four feet. The total combined weight is approximately eleven hundred pounds for the base plate and also the structure. And both art pieces are created by Mr. Rick Randall of Randall Art Ranch. Mr. Randall was previously commissioned by City of Vista, San Diego Botanical Garden, Palm Desert, Manhattan Beach, and Fallbrook Art Center. On page twenty-one of the staff report includes a list of additional art pieces that he had completed, as well as awards he had received. This is the Tree of Lives rendering, or the piece that's being proposed for Garden House. As proposed, the artwork complies with BMC section three-point-thirty-two sixty of, which is the standards for artworks as it relates to certain criteria for approval such as visibility, durability, and permanence. And staff's recommendation is to approve the art in public places proposal submitted by the developer to commission artist Rick Randall to fabricate and install the art pieces at Garden House and Cortabella as fulfillment of the art in public places requirement. We do have the developer in the audience as well as the artist here tonight. This concludes staff's presentation, unless there are any questions.
Thank you, Rowena. Any questions to Rowena? Or you want to hear from the developer first?
It's up to you. I have two for the developer, but I have two for.
Well, you're keeping it even.
Yeah, right. Maybe, yes. Just a couple of clarifying questions. So just to be clear, the BMC, the Bellflower Municipal Code, for this type of evaluation, this type of project would require a, a, a fund of forty-nine thousand three-hundred-and-ten dollars, correct?
That is correct. That is based on the project valuation.
Perfect. And so the developer is proposing to spend, to affect these fifty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-forty-one, so it would be two thousand and change above the required amount for, per the municipal code, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. And then the last question I have is, on page six and seven of the report, where it goes over the applications that the applicants admitted, just to clarify, it's actually on page seven, in the box where it says total estimated cost? So where he notes from public art funds, is that what he had already deposited?
Correct, as part of the developer obtaining his construction permits, he had to make a deposit towards the public arts funds.
Perfect, okay, great. That completes my questions, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of questions. Can you show the, the plan showing the location on Cortabella? Okay, so right now, this is a vacant lot, right? I mean, let me see here, here you go.
The other side.
The other side. This is vacant, right, correctly? That's correct. So are there going to be hedges here along this side?
As part of the requirement for landscaping, it's limited to no, no higher than forty-two inches. It's actually a, a parking lot of another property right here. I believe it's a doctor's office.
Okay, and then would this will be the sidewalk? Or this is the sidewalk?
This is the sidewalk area.
The gray?
Yes.
Okay, and there'll be trees here? Okay, all right. Now, as far as the, if you can show the side view of the pedestal? There you go. You mentioned that there's going to be a, a seating surface, correct?
Correct.
And this is four feet wide? Four feet wide?
The, the base of the structure, the, the base plate for the structure, which is right here, is four feet by four feet.
Okay, so how wide is the seating, seating area?
It is.
Dimension down the bottom. Ten foot, ten and a half foot or something.
So ten, ten feet?
Yes, that, that includes the width of also the landscaping. So we have landscaping and then the seating area right here.
Okay, so is, is this a seating, it's going to be individual seats, or is this a seating or, explain to me.
Correct, so this is a concrete seat, and in between, there's some pop-ups? Lack of better word.
So that's what I'm getting at.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't want to see someone laying down there and taking, taking space as a, as a dormitory.
Correct, and that was actually discussed with developer, hence they had to redesign it.
Thank you, that answered my, that question. In terms, and then going back to the materials being used, it's steel, right?
Correct.
And then you said very low maintenance, and I mentioned, and you read about something use of WD-40?
Correct, so over time, it will form a patina. And part of the maintenance, if you want to preserve a certain surface, then you can actually wash it with, or spray it with WD-40.
Okay, so in the unlikely event that somebody vandalized it with spray paint?
Power washing would be one of the options.
Okay, so can the paint really stick into the corten steel?
From what I've heard before of this material, it will, it, sorry, it forms a rust or patina, so when you power wash it, eventually it'll have that patina finish.
Okay, so it's very easy to clean, basically, if somebody kind of sprayed paint, paints on it. Okay, that's good, that's, I like that. And then, and what's the timing of this to be completed in, in relation to the construction of the residential and commercial units?
For the Garden House project, the developer had already installed the base, and he was aware that, you know, that's an at-risk submittal, but he had already pulled the permit to pour the base for the Garden House, and I don't believe the Cortabella's poured yet, so.
Okay, okay, very good. That's all for now.
You have any questions to staff?
Well, I'm going to be a little more positive, Sonny, he's got homeless sleep in there, he's got rust on the thing, he's got graffiti.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking to the future, you know? As John mentioned, looking to the future, not just what's in front of you.
You've seen the neighbor across the street there, he's anticipating living there.
I know. I just want to be proactive.
No, and I appreciate that. No, I think it's, I'm ready for the testimony from the, I'd like to hear what it is that's being depicted here, and we'll ask out of the artist.
Okay, all right, well, let's hear from, hear from the developer.
Good evening, Mayor Dutton and members of the city council. Paul Feilberg with Vintana Homes. We're pleased to present to you this evening the, the public art pieces. It, it was important for us to find stuff that related to, to each community. So starting with Cortabella, we have that Italianate architecture. You know, it begs for kind of that Roman, you know, the fountains and the, if you go to Romans, I can't think of any of them, but.
Columns.
Yes, but it didn't feel right, so we, we wanted something that more, was more contemporary, but still relatable to the community. That's a plaza. It's, it's already with the map was recorded as a public plaza, so we thought it really begged to, to allocate some dollars from Garden House and place them there at Cortabella. And we think that's a real visible spot. It was staff's idea to add the armrests. In fact, we think that was a good call. And then at the same time, we've, we've got some planting planned, you know, with it. So it, we think it'll be a pleasant area to sit, and it'll be very striking locationally and, you know, also for our residents. And then the bases, I think, Sonny, the base is up high enough, and with the hard art, that any shrubs and stuff get planted will be, won't obscure anything. So at Garden House, you know, it's all about green building, and, you know, we've got the, the, the committee gardens on the, by the church side, and, and, you know, we laid it all out for solar, and we've done the Build It Green program. So we really thought there, the Tree of Lives, you know, made a lot of sense, you know, with that theme of, of the community. It was placed in that location, and then you can see, we've even played off of that with our, our landscape architect. So we, you can, there's kind of the, the spheres and stuff that work off of it, those are rock gardens with succulent plants, and, and it all kind of interreacts, you know, and comes to that center of where the Tree of Lives is going to sit. So the material is very low maintenance with the corten steel, and as Roe was saying, it, the patina's over time, and, and then I haven't worked with Rick, but my sales and marketing VP has, and, and thought really highly of Rick, and I think his resume, you know, speaks for itself. And if you have any questions, he's here as well, so.
Paul, on the Tree of Life, what are the leaves made out of?
Stainless.
Those are stainless leaves, are they, like the wind would wiggle them? Okay.
Yeah, and we've positioned those.
It looked like it was more three-dimensional is why I brought that up. Are they stainless that are stained? Because they're like a gold right there, is it just?
They're all just, they're all just.
Patina, they're all patina, okay.
Well.
Silver stainless is going to, okay. It's real, real stainless, nah, there's cheap stainless that gets a little tarnished.
I've never used cheap.
Okay.
Paul, have him come up. He's talking pretty.
And the, the leaves, well, we're, we're setting those high enough that, you know, people can't pluck them.
Oh, I wouldn't have.
Oh, yeah, recyclables, scrap. Yeah, no, it looks good. I just got to say that these are the best two art pieces that I think that came across this dais in a while.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I really do. Yeah, I really do. With that said... Any other comments out in the audience?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Mr. Randall, um, when I saw these two art pieces, the, as an avid gardener, the Tree of Life is a home run. So, explain to me the, is it refugio, right?
Yeah, refugio.
Refugio, okay. What's, what's, it's an abstract, right?
Yeah, it's an abstract.
What's the concept?
Refugio, uh, it means like a haven or a... Hello. Refugio is like, it means a haven or a safe place.
A safe place, okay.
And so, my wife and I, we're Randall Art Ranch, we're visionary artists. I don't know a polite way to say this. A lot of artists really kind of get out there with their description of their piece. It's, we call it the artist BS. But with us, we don't do that. We're, we're pretty, we're down to earth and simple. Yeah, so, we look at the project as it's a place where people are gonna come, they're gonna live. Like with Garden House, you have the tree that kind of represents the building. And then, all the leaves on the tree will be all the different people that over time are gonna live there and leave their mark or, or whatever. So, it's, it's just kind of a, a simple, homey.
Okay, that's good. And, and I, I look at your other works, and I, I love the butterfly, just to let you know.
Thank you.
And the book that is elevated on the library, something like that, okay, that, and when you show how it was produced, that was, that's magnificent. As far as the, um, uh, location, I, I think it, it's a perfect location for both pieces. And I, I, I'd like to commend Paul for thinking of splitting the, the funds into two locations. So, instead of just pouring so much money into one location, I think two, two locations that will have, um, a, a piece of art. So, I think that's, that's a good move. So, I really thank you for that. So, and...
Thank you.
Good art. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of my questions are already answered. They're great. I really, I, I like the creativity, but they're just, they fit in well to what we've, uh, it's already been said. But my question is, um, can we incorporate lighting elements, like enough light on these things?
Sure.
I just think it would serve not only to accentuate them at night, like, and when I've driven by other cities and they have these public art pieces and that night, they just stand out really nicely. I think it, uh...
Absolutely. We're, we're actually gonna shine down on Cortabella.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna front light it and back light it.
Okay.
We think it's gonna look really dramatic. And then, on Garden House, we have three tree up lights planted all around it.
Sorry, I couldn't tell, that's why. I just seen them in other places, and I think it just adds a nice pop and it, it, it makes, it just looks nice.
We deal, we deal with a lot of different cities, and we try to get them to realize the same thing. In the daytime, you've got a piece of art, and it looks great. And then nighttime, nobody notices it. But if you throw some lights on it, maybe even some colored lights, it changes the whole look, and it, it gives you an art piece for nighttime.
Yeah. And frankly, I'm, I'm hoping that other projects in the future will start incorporating elements like this, so I, I thank you, so.
Will you have our number, so you can call me?
Absolutely.
I'm willing.
I think you have fans here, so. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Coops?
No, I, I'm real enthused. Paul always delivers first-class projects. And Paul, who bought the very first house you built in Bellflower?
Uh, a beautiful family, Dan and Kenny Coops.
So, we go way back and, uh...
I thought it was Clyde Wilson.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Wilson is procrastinating.
Oh, I see.
Dan was my first thought.
Okay, but he came close, right? He came close.
He could've been first.
He could've been first.
Mr. Wilson likes to negotiate. Dan was a good deal.
Okay, well, thank you. With that, anybody in the audience wanna chime in?
I'd like to know what that thing on the left portrays.
On the left, of what?
That thing that looks like, it's supposed to look like a chair or something. What's that portray? That's art? If that's art, boy, this town has gone goofy then.
The artist explained it, I think.
That's abstract. That's so abstract, I can't figure out what it is. It ain't even a chair.
Sleep on it tonight, Joe. Sleep on it tonight. It'll come to you about two in the morning.
What is that thing?
Whatever you want it to be.
Whatever you want it to be.
It's abstract. It's so abstracting and it's goofy.
Good night, Joe. What's your pleasure, guys? Let's move on.
Well, I make a motion to, there's no, there's no vote on this, right? There's basically directions? I make a motion to, to accept the recommendation from staff.
Second. Okay, with that on the floor, without objection, that'll be the order. No objection. Four oh. All right. Okay, item thirteen B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to approve a process to appoint a successor to fill Councilmember Ron Schonberger's district, City Council District One seat for two years until the next regularly scheduled municipal election, November tenth, two thousand twenty. By way of explanation, we have a four years, we've made a number of recommendations, some of it based off, uh, previous, uh, processes, and some of it based off what we heard in closed session last week. On the discussion of the items, staff made these recommendations. Everything is amenable, and it's completely up to the council, it's your discretion how you wanna do this.
Okay, I can just go down one by one to, we can just start some dialogue here, guys. Is that your pleasure there?
Sure.
Item A, uh, the application process was an application packet for the appointment, uh, City Council.
Right, last bit, sorry. Thirteen B, there was an error in that. We've submitted a corrected package on page one. On item D, first sentence, it's required that the two-person City Council Ad Hoc Committee, that was incorrectly stated on the staff report. And then, on number two in the exhibit A, it was also incorrectly sta, and we stated it as a two-person ad hoc subcommittee. So, though with that correction, that's where we stop. Thank you.
And also on, on item five, on the staff report, because it's all in red on the correction sheet?
No, those are, did you have that?
That's corrected.
Because it's all red.
You corrected it? To do one subcommittee, okay, yeah. So, correct. Item five is added.
But the agenda is correct, from what I can tell. Okay, so I'm just gonna go off the agenda, okay. Okay, we're to approve, uh, you guys are good with approving the application process and the application packet?
Yes.
As, as corrected.
Mr. Garza?
I, I am, Mr. Mayor. I would just ask that if we can just add to the application process, I think it was exhibit A.
I'm sorry, what?
I believe it was exhibit A, correct?
Right. Yes, A.
So, I would, I would ask your indulgence to see if, um, if as part of the application packet, that we can include that, um, any interested members of the first district to, um, also include a resume and to be optional. So, if they saw desire to submit one, that's fine. If not, that's okay.
So, if we wanna add a, uh, resume optional option?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that will be number four of the application checklist on the back? Because you have, um, to be considered for appointment, you must submit the completed and signed application packet in person, which includes one, two, three, application, FPPC Form 700, nomination paper, and then you want the fourth one, resume, optional resume.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to be, so we're on the same page.
Thank you.
So, we can put it there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, let me see, that was, that was on A. And then, um, I do have some comments that I think they're more appropriate under item B, and I'm no longer not there yet, so.
No, that's right next. Unless everybody else is good with A.
I'm fine with A.
Okay. Uh, item, uh, B, authorize a city clerk to make the application packet available of the following application process. To accept app, applications from qualified residences from District One until one PM November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, to fill District One City Council seat. So, you had some comments first, you might, while they're on the tip of your tongue?
Yes, sir. So, I would ask this, if, if you gentlemen agree that, that first of all, that we put out a call for candidates, just because of the, the timing of this process, that we, uh, we promote this on our website, the city website, that we promote it in our Twitter and our Facebook feeds as well. They were calling for candidates in the Twitter as well. And then, um, finally, we can also include like a, a copy of the map of the first district, so that some people out in the community I know, don't really know the district boundaries.
Right.
So, there may be some people that are interested, but they may find, once they look at the map, that they don't live in the first, so just to clarify all that.
District One map, okay, I got that written down. So, I'll go back over these at the, you know, we tie it all together.
And that completes my, my suggested additions.
Anybody else with, uh, comments on B?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay. Dan, you're good?
Yep.
Okay.
As amended. As amended, yeah.
As amended, yeah.
I just assumed we're gonna put it on the website, but it's good to follow up, make sure.
Item, uh, C, appoint a two-person City Council ad hoc subcommittees to review all the applications submitted and interest qualified in seeking the position. I'd like to recommend the mayor and the mayor pro tem.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Second that, yeah, soon.
Pretty good.
Absolutely.
I guess, I guess the mayor pro tem's good. Got that one out of the way. Done. Just write my notes here. Item D, uh, require that the two City Council ad hoc committees, subcommittees review all applications and report as recommended, as recommendations to the full City Council at the regular scheduled meeting, uh, November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Well, it should be one. That's why I didn't wanna read off this, but... So, this is require that the one, that the required, it should be reread, the, the single ad hoc council's two-person subcommittee review application reported through a baseball City Council at the regular scheduled meeting, November twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen.
Okay.
That's what I just said, isn't it?
Well, it read wrong. It's...
It read wrong?
It's not your fault.
Oh, okay, got, okay, oh, okay. Two City Council, yeah, okay, I forgot to do that. You're right, okay. I got the two down.
So, we just add a dash person?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make sure I go for it. Okay. So, with this amended, are we good with that, guys?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on. C is good. D. And we got D, that was D. We're done with that one. And then, E, if necessary, invite the finalist for an interview of the City Council at a special council meeting tentatively scheduled for December third, two thousand eighteen. Upon completion of the interviews, the City Council may appoint qualified candidate to be filled at that seat.
The reason for that is just for explanation, is that it's possible the, the council, the subcommittee could make a recommendation, the council agrees, and they vote on it on the twenty-sixth, totally up to the City Council. Where, what staff is saying here is, if necessary, and you don't come to that, then we schedule the meeting for the date set forward. And these, these are discretionary steps in the process.
If there's no consensus on the twenty-sixth.
There's no consensus or whatever. Too many pieces of paper up here, corrected and uncorrected. Schedule the special City Council meeting no later than December seventh, two thousand eighteen, to either appoint a candidate or fill the vacancy, or schedule a special municipal election for March fifth, two thousand nineteen.
Again, this is exactly the same as the previous. I guess what we're, we would ask for here is, if you agree that these, if these two steps are necessary, you just agree with these two steps.
Yeah, or if nothing works, then we alter and we discuss it at that time.
There you go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you clarify one point, though? Because in, in E, the council could appoint a qualified candidate.
Correct.
Right? If they, if the council couldn't come to a consensus...
Then it could go to F.
Basically, we just go to a, call on the election on December seventh.
You could do that, too. That's your other option. Or you could appoint. It doesn't matter. It's, you're, you have discretion to do anything you wanna do at any step in this process.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just for clarification, December seventh is the drop dead date for calling a special election in, on March fifth, two thousand nineteen. So, that is the absolute deadline to make a decision whether or not to appoint, or whether to call for the special election.
So, if you, if you don't come to a consensus by that date, then you have the option of calling the, the special election on March the seventh, two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
On December seventh.
So, so basically, the scenario is, if we cannot come to a consensus on the third, we can basically have a change of heart on the seventh, before the, by the seventh, and still come up with a consensus before we call an election. But if we can't, then we call an election on the seventh.
You can call it, appoint on the twenty-sixth, on the third, or on the seventh.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and/or, yeah, it's, at any point, you could stop the process and call for the election, prior to the seventh, or on the seventh.
Okay.
What if nothing gets done before the seventh?
Then...
Just goes on to get a standard, or no, no, but nobody applies, nobody, we, we need more time to evaluate?
If, if there is no appointment before December seventh, is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
So, at that point, my recommendation would be to call for the election on the seventh. Because that would allow the time for, it would be a compressed amount of time, but would allow for nominations, for qualification for the ballot for the March fifth, two thousand nineteen, uh, special election.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, uh, go ahead and approve the consideration of possible action for approving this process as amended.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe you need, I, I don't know if you've asked for public comment on this process or not, but you may want to.
Oh, public opinion here.
Hi, John Poldre. I applied in the last opening that Juan got, um, and there were two, two committees. And so, there was talk about two or one committee, uh, first. So, one committee interviewed everyone that Sonny and Ron was on, and I was interviewed. But the other committee didn't, or I wasn't invited to an interview. So, I hope whatever, if we're gonna have one or two, that everyone who applies, um, has a chance to be interviewed. Because I felt, I and other people felt slighted that not both committees interviewed us. Like, one committee did a tremendous job reaching out to us and to hear us, um, speak verbally about our concerns about the city and the future. And I was very disappointed the other committee did not reach out and invite everyone who had applied to, um, uh, be interviewed in person. I think that's really important to have an open and diverse council or, or process. It seems that the timeline is very short, because when you apply for a regular council election, you have more days to gather the signatures. It seems like you have, um, less days than before. And so, and this is a smaller area. So, I don't know, maybe in the future, to consider, like, is, is it in state law or city ordinance? How many days you have to collect the signatures? Or since it's a smaller area, should it be less signatures? Because this is the requirement, um, before for the whole city to get twenty out of thirty, um, signatures. So, that's something maybe to be reviewed later. So, I just, I hope that it will be a fair process and everyone will be invited and welcomed, um, at City Hall to apply or to inquire about this process and this opportunity for our neighborhood, especially after, you know, people being burglarized, having, um, intruders in their homes like myself, uh, to have good representation, so we can have, uh, and, you know, deal with issues and concerns with North Bellflower. Thank you.
To answer your question about the interviews or whatever, it'd be similar as applications for employment. There's an analogy that, you know, you have a, a stack of, uh, applications and you weed them out, and then you call on a certain select for interview that passed muster. That is my impression of, of doing interviews. And that is just myself.
And let me just comment on the twenty signatures. Honestly, if a, if an applicant or candidate cannot gather twenty signatures, that is a problem in terms of electability. So, I, I live it at that.
Anybody else wishing to come forward?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment on this here, especially under your item B that you have, where you're talking about, uh, oh, the applicant process to accept applications from qualified residents. So, that means qualified residents in District One. Am I correct?
That's correct.
How long do they have to be, uh, at, well, for, for this process to take place? How long does a person have to be in residence?
Qualified refers to eligible to vote and resides within that district.
Resigns in it for a period of time?
Is eligible to vote and lives within that district. There is no, we have not gotten into standards on that. There's no...
I think, I think you need to, because all of a... I think, I think you need to, because all of a sudden, somebody can move into that district and say, I'm pulling the papers, and get away with it. So, I, I see a conflict of interest there.
Yeah, it has to be your domicile, and we kinda hashed that out a few years ago.
Thank you.
We actually changed some code.
Cause I think there's a conflict of interest with some people.
Anybody else wishing to come forward? And discuss this item? Not seeing any? Like I was jumping the gun before getting audience input, I apologize for that. And, uh, I would like to, uh, do the consideration for the action, uh, for approving this process as amended, as we just discussed.
I'll second that.
Should you call roll, we'll get a roll call vote on this one, please, for item thirteen A, I mean thirteen B, excuse me.
Mayor Pro Tem Santaynez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Consent calendar time. Anybody got any recusals, or items pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, fourteen F.
Fourteen F?
F, like Frank.
Okay.
Have a property conflict, since I have property located near the property being discussed, fourteen I.
An I?
I have property, again, located within the zone there at eighty-seven twenty-four Cedar. And fourteen J, I'll not be participating in that either, cause I have property located at ninety-four sixty-four Pacific.
Mr. Garza?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull fourteen F for, I mean, I'm sorry, fourteen H for separate consideration, um, fourteen M for separate consideration, and fourteen Q, um, but that, not for separate consideration, it's more informational, just asking questions.
Okay. Mr. Santaynez, you got any?
I don't have any.
Okay.
No contact, Sunny?
Uh, not, not tonight.
Not tonight? He's cleaning those up. Okay, let's go start with, uh, discussion for, uh, Mr. Garza, H.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so on fourteen H, I just had a, uh, quick question, in reading the report, and this is regarding the, the property on Carpentero. In reading page two, under discussion, the second paragraph, it notes that, uh, the original request had been for a time-based parking of forty feet, but then it was amended to twenty feet by the Public Safety Commission. I was wondering if the reduced size of the twenty feet, it still provides a safety element that the requister was requesting.
Yeah, the, uh, the city engineer spoke with the requister out there on the site, and they looked at that measurement, the difference between forty and twenty, and twenty feet, uh, the city engineer was comfortable, and the requister was am- amenable to his decision, so they, they left it right there, twenty feet.
Okay, perfect, great. Thank you, just, I didn't see that in the report, so I wanted to ask it, so. Do you want me to ask the other ones?
Yeah, go ahead and, yeah, perfect, you can, you can get them all, because you know what you're asking.
Perfect, okay, great. So, then on fourteen M, and fourteen M has to do with the fleet vehicle and equipment maintenance and repair services. If I missed this in the report, I, I apologize, but, um, I noted that there's a, a list of the inventory of city vehicles, and also, like, small equipment. And so, the pricing that is being, um, submitted by, by the service provider, is that based off of that list? And if so, is there any flexibility in case of that list changes? I'm assuming that at some point in time, we're gonna.
Oh, yeah.
Change equipment?
Absolutely, yeah, so, when, when, when we surplus out vehicles, um, it's usually cause we're moving vehicles in. So, it's usually like a one-for-one swap for us.
Okay.
And when we go through, it's not changing in numbers, if we're not going from, say, fifty vehicles to sixty vehicles, that would, uh, require us to amend the contract at any point in time. So, the contract is based on, um, the list of equipment that we have operating, our rolling stock, for, you know, lack of a better term, at the time that the bid goes out. So, what was in there at that list, from, again, small equipment, like weed eaters, all the way up to our, our front loader tractors and stuff, you know, equipment ranging in price from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, all the way down to a couple hundred bucks. So, that's all taken into consideration, um, all, when the RFPs go out, all of the, um, uh, potential bidders that we submitted that information to, so they have a, an apples-to-apples comparison, they all get that list of what our equipment is, and they base their bid on that list.
So, in this case, it's an awarding, right?
Yes.
This is not an approval for an RFP, this is to award.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is to award, correct.
So, um, so if in the future, like, if we, I don't know the business like you do, but if, if there's a vehicle that we have, um, in our inventory, that's a little older, you know, requiring more service, but when we swap it out for a newer equipment, um, newer vehicle, I'm assuming it's gonna require less maintenance, because it's newer?
Correct.
Is there any flexibility on that, or it's just, this is a standard price?
Not, not in terms of pricing, because it, there's, there's a lot more to it than just that. There's, you know, you, we have our monthly routine maintenance that they go through, or preventative maintenance of all the vehicles, uh, that they work through each month. Then we have vehicles, you know, who, they're parked along the curb, and they get sideswiped by a hit-and-run driver, you know, it just happened a couple of weeks ago to us. So, in, in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's a fixed monthly price, based on our normal preventative maintenance, plus additional work that we may have to do. Some months, it can be very heavy, if we get a car that's damaged, and we have to do a few thousand dollars worth of work to one, two, three, four vehicles, versus another month where we just may have to replace a couple weed eaters for a couple hundred bucks. So, it kinda goes up and down, depending on the month, and, and the luckiness that we have with the equipment out there. But, um, you know, like I said, when we bring in new equipment, that doesn't, or new vehicles or new equipment, that does not require as much maintenance as, say, a ten-year-old vehicle, it certainly balances out the vehicles that we do have to do a lot of maintenance on.
Perfect, great, so I think that's a perfect, uh, way to describe it, it all balances out at the end, so.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. That completes my comment, comments on this one, Mayor, so, do you want me to move on to?
Do you want Q, right?
I'm sorry?
Q.
Q, yes, okay. So.
I'll let Bernie handle this one, since he's the project manager.
Okay, great, thank you. So, on Q, um, I was just hoping if we can, uh, get an update, provide an update to the community on what's going on with our, with the Aquatics Center roof repair project.
Sure, so when we started this project, it was originally gonna be ADA improvements. We found the leak, and we were in the process of installing solar thermal system. So, as part of the contract, we, we had scheduled to repair a portion of the roof. During the tear-off, however, our structural engineer that we hired, recommended that the entire roof structure be rebuilt. So, we did issue a, a change order to the stone collector, who's a contractor. They have since completed the reconstruction of the roof. Climattec, who's the actual contractor for the citywide energy efficiency project, they have completed the installation of the solar thermal system. Uh, what we are at right now is, we have furnished the contractor with the plans for the ceiling, lighting, and ducting, and we are waiting for a price from them to complete that portion of the work. At the same time, right now, the contractor is working in the locker rooms and the restrooms, uh, on the actual ADA improvement, so they are moving along.
Those are the pictures that we've been getting, that have the, the trenching and all that?
That is correct, so that's all the plumbing, uh, in those, uh, locker rooms, again, to make them, uh, ADA improvement.
Great.
Or ADA code.
Thank you, and then the last question I have is, because of some of these, um, unanticipated delays, do we have a, like, an updated ETA?
As of right now, excluding the ceiling, we, we are projected to finish in December, uh, and that's where the actual locker room work. For the ceiling, once we get the pricing on that, that may add another approximately thirty working days.
So, we're looking at Q, one of next year?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you, tha- that completes my question, Mr. Mayor.
Good. That was a good question, I got more information than that than I did my update. All right. Balance of the consent calendar, I make a motion for that.
Second?
You know, the motion is second on the floor, without objection, that'll be the order. Council reports, Mr. Garza, you ready to go?
Yes, sir, I am. I will hold my comments on Mr. Schnabelger, I'm assuming, until, until the end. But I wanted to thank, um, the members of the community who are part of the Sister City Association, I know that we had the Los Mochis delegation here back a couple of weeks ago. It's always fantastic to see them, and I know that for next year, I think is a, some of us are gonna be going over there, me included, I'm really excited. I'm hoping our superintendent will join us as well. It's an internal thing. So, I wanted to thank everyone that, that participated in that. On the thirty-first of Au- of October, um, the city manager, and our director of planning, and our director of economic development, and myself went to Metro to meet on, on the latest regarding the upcoming light rail that's coming to our city. So, I thought it was a really good, uh, meeting of the minds, in terms of the latest on that project, so. That is that, and then on November sixth, um, again, it was election night, so I wanted to thank our residents for voting. The initial numbers that I saw for elections for Bellflower, um, historically, the prim- again, the primary numbers I've seen is that we had the highest amount of people voting for a midterm, as far as the, the numbers that I've seen in, in, in the county registrar's record. So, I wanted to thank all our residents for participating in, in that election, it's really super important. And to Joe's point before, you know, as a veteran, I think, um, that's the reason we serve, right, too? So, that, those of us that are, that are residents of, and citizens of this nation can vote. So, as a veteran, I thank you when you vote, so. I wanted to thank our veterans for, uh, for Veterans Day, and for all the service, but not only the veterans, but also the spouses and the families who support them. I wanted to send out my prayers to the victims and families of the borderline bar and grill shooting that happened last week. I know that some of us in this room know people that were either there, or are, have a relationship with people in there, so, uh, my deepest prayers for them. And also, uh, praise for the victims of the, the devastating fires that are going on, um, in our, in our state right now, up in Paradise, and here in the Wolfsey fires. Again, I personally know people that have been affected by those, both of those fires, so, um, it's, it's, uh, really, really devastating. I also wanna thank the firefighters for the service in, in, in fighting those fires, as well as their families for supporting them. I know that Ron used to go out and feed firefighters in situations like this, so, um, again, it's, uh, emotionally, it's, it's a tough night, because Ron's not here, so. And then, uh, I will complete my comments with that, until Mr. Schnabelger's comments afterwards, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You wanna go, and you want some comments, you wanna share comments about Ron's, Ron now?
Uh, if, if you're okay with me.
Yeah, I'm okay, then I'll just, I'll just, I got some stuff here that, why don't, why don't we do that, everybody's got a little something to say, why don't just, just do it with your comments?
Yeah, I, um.
Keep on track, yeah.
You know, Ron was a, was a good friend, and, um, it, it's tough not having him here. So, uh, just deepest prayers for his family, for his soul. And, uh, just thanking for his service, I think, I tell the story that a lot of people that are out there don't know the amount of sacrifice that that gentleman did in serving our city, in our community. The example I give people is that on December eighteen, when we had the cannabis discussion here, and a lot of people don't know, but that guy was in the hospital that day. And, uh, a, a common sense person would've told me you need to stay there, and that guy came here. Not only did he come here, but he ran the meeting from here. And, uh, he risked himself that day, and that's just one day. So, I just, uh, he was a friend, he was a good public servant. And, uh, I, I miss him, so. I just, uh, that's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Coops?
Yes, uh, that was a really important night in our city, when we had a meeting that Juan referred to, and, uh, Ron was the mayor at that point. He was hospitalized several days prior to the meeting, and, uh, he begged the physician to let him come out of Kaiser, to come to the meeting. And the physician made the deal with him, says, yeah, but you have a procedure tomorrow, and you need to be back here by one o'clock. And you're gonna have your suit on when you come back, cause that'll prove that you actually went to a city council meeting. Well, I think he lasted till about three or four.
Three or four in the morning.
Three or four in the morning, and then Joel, I think, took him back to Kaiser, so he could have the procedure done at six o'clock in the morning that had been promised, but that was where his heart was, he knew he wanted to be here. And, uh, he, uh, city first, hell second, I mean, that's the way he rolled. Ron was always doing things for all of us other candidates, and he got no fanfare for it, because he was always there, I can put out signs for you, I'll host something for you. And he had learned that, sitting at the feet of his stepfather, Ken Cleveland, so he'd involved with this for years. And so, he knew politicking better than anybody, but there was never the, quite the right opportunity for him to run. Well, then, when Randy Baumgar's retired, there was an opportunity, and he went forward with it. Ron had a heart of gold, but you didn't want to upset him. You could, uh, you always knew what Ron was thinking. And, uh, we have a chair in this back here, where we have meetings, or we have discussions, closed session. One night, the city attorney that we employed at the time did meet with Ron's approval, and basically, Ron told him that his time was up. No one will sit in that chair anymore, because they know that there's bad chi in that chair. The council's allowed me to put this flag out here where Ron would sit. Ron was an important part of our Kiwanis Club, that made sure that the flag always flew on Bellflower Boulevard. And, uh, three or four flags a year go up, because the wind whips them up and tears them up. What, about six, seven thousand dollars a flag, guys, something like that? But he always made sure there was money in the account, that we would raise through our fireworks stand, or the auction that Ray would always, always chair. And so, I wanted to, I think to typify what Ron, in his heart, wanted to remember for, not only the service of the community, is that flag. And, uh, he had many facets to him, you know, and we learned to love all of them. And, uh, when we first got on council, I was kinda fearful of him, cause I didn't know what he was exposed, you know, what would, I saw him play Little League, and that didn't go well, you know, so. But, uh, tonight is, you watch those that view that are in the audience, and those that were watching on TV, and you basically saw this man die in front of you. I mean, every week, it got a little less, and we had ramps in the back to get him in here, and we made sure he was sitting here in his chair before the rest come in, cause he, he was a proud man, he didn't wanna show that he was in that wheelchair. He wanted to show that he was still Ron. And, uh, we're always gonna remember him, although he didn't serve five consecutive terms like some others, but the short times here, he was here, he made a difference. And it was a positive difference. And, uh, we're all, we're missing him, especially tonight, even though he had issues where he couldn't always be here at the meetings, we always knew he was still there and would come back. Now, the finality of tonight, knowing he will never sit here again with us, that causes us to have concern. But, uh, Bellflower was a better place to live because of Ron Schnabelger, that's the bottom line. And we're all better off as friends of his for having known him, he made our lives better. And, uh, how many people can you say that about him? Had you gone to his funeral service, you'd find out all the things that Ron had to do in Bellflower over the years, and, uh, it was just a real honor and a pleasure to call him a friend. Thank you.
Mr. Santaynez, you wanna follow that act?
It's ge- it's getting more and more difficult to follow those acts.
Yeah.
Uh, let me, let me switch gear first. I, I just want to echo Mr. Garza's comment on the, the victims of the fire, it's, it's, it's very devastating, especially what happened in, in Paradise, California, um, I have a few friends there, and, um, fortunately, I contacted them, and they were able to escape, um, the devastation, so, but it's just, I mean, talking with them is just kind of, it's. it's unimaginable, uh, the pain and suffering that they went through. And the same goes through with the victims of, um, uh, the fires in Malibu, Westlake, Village, that area, uh, so I ask you to, to please, uh, keep them in your, in your prayers, um. Uh, the second thing is, I know it's getting, um, it's now, we're now back into standard time, um, so it's getting dark early in the evening, so I just want to please, uh, I just want to ask you to please drive carefully, because you've seen the news, even on crosswalks, the pedestrians are getting hit, even on crosswalks, so make sure that, uh, we drive safely, um, especially, um, uh, during school days. And, uh, we've lost leaders in the city of Bellflower, and, um, i- it was hard to lose, um, former mayors Ray Smith, um, uh, Ken Cleveland, Dorothy King, uh, in the last year or so. That was painful. Uh, but, but this time it is very different, because, um, they were past mayors, past council members, and, uh, they were no longer here in the dais. I- i- it's very different this time because we lost someone who is, who was here. Granted that, um, he lost, um, he missed a few meetings recently, but, um, I, I know that in his heart of hearts, uh, he wanted to be here, he really, he really did. And I know that he struggled coming here, uh, with a lot of assistance, assistance from his family, his children, his wife, his cousins, they would, they would bring Ron here on a wheelchair, and I commend staff for, um, putting together that special ramp so that, um, Ron can basically go up this, go up the, go up stairs and be seated here as, as comfortably as he can. And that was, that was very special, and I, I, observing Ron during his last few days, uh, it is just, it was painful for me, because I view him as a, a very competent man, uh, when I met him the first time, he is, uh, I would say cocky, I mean, for lack of a better word, he's very cocky, and, and to see him kind of fall into that stage that is becoming weaker and weaker, I mean, it is just, i- i- it was really difficult for me to see him in that stage, but I give him a lot of credit, uh, for trying his best to be here, to fulfill his duties, that he ran for city council and he wanted to be, he want to, he wanted to serve the city, and he did that with great honor. And, uh, a- as Dan mentioned, i- it's very different, because until he died, we expected him to be back. Although, although he was in the hospital, he was very ill, going through so many procedures that I, I cannot just, I, I've been in the hospital too, but I cannot just imagine the pain that he went through day in and day out, it seems like there was no end to it. And, uh, what, what is different now is there's no more Ron. We cannot expect him to be back anymore, we cannot expect him to answer the phone calls if we call him. There is no more Ron who's gonna speak his mind, sometimes he pushes the envelope, sometimes he becomes, um, I would say, going into gray areas, uh, in terms of his diplomacy. But that's Ron, that is Ron. So I, I, I would miss him dearly, and, um, uh, although I would kind of look back and, uh, think about the fond memories we had, a lot of the e- great issues that, um, that, um, that we've been through. And I think, um, for me, I, I cannot divulge the details, but I, I think the most difficult decision that we ever made here was the, uh, the glory tabernacle in a closed session. To me, I would still think about that, that was, uh, the most difficult decision. And I hope that, um, we will not go through that decision-making again, uh, because i- it was very tough, so, so I, I would miss Ron, thank you so much.
Well said, well said, all of you. Ron was a, was a friend of over forty years to, to me, and, uh, he's the kinda guy that you wouldn't tell him if something was wrong, because the wrath would come down on you, whether he would get the troops up and he would fix your problem. You wouldn't know who he would call or what he would do, and he was that kinda guy, he would, you wouldn't tell, you would, nobody would wanna tell him, and it's not just me or anybody, it's just, he was that kinda, when he found out, he would do it in his own little way, and, and your problem would be gone, and, uh, most people are humble enough not to say anything, and then you kinda learn, "Well, I don't wanna say anything because he's gonna come with all he has to, to fix it, even though it didn't need to be fixed." One little nice story personally with me, twenty-five years ago, I was remodeling my house, and it got to where the, the inside fireplace was getting done, and there was stonework on it, and he came over to, to stop by that night, and the masonary just left, and I'm looking at this fireplace, and it looked bad, it just didn't look good, it should've been done a different way, and, and I'm thinking, "Well, you know, it's, the mortar's still wet, now's the time to knock it apart," and, uh, I'm thinking, "No, I can't do that, 'cause, you know, masons put stuff together, it's like art, you know, it's their work." So I walked away and got on the phone to call the contractor and say, you know, "I'm gonna be ta- taking this apart," whatever, I know more, got the phone or whatever, and I hear all this commotion, Ron's there with a hammer busting the whole fireplace up, he's just, it's took it to the pieces and, and, you know, contractor, "What's going on?" And I go, "Well, it's too late now," and he goes, "It's all ripped out." He goes, "Well, now's the time to rip it out, because it's a lot tougher tomorrow." And I'll never forget that with, with Ron, 'cause it was a problem and, and he did that, and, and to this day, I mean, didn't he, we have, ever since then, for twenty-five years, there was a, like a little gold, uh, trophy label, and we had it, uh, adhesiveed onto the fireplace mantel, and it says, "Ron, uh, Fireplace Compliments of Ron Schnablegger," and that, uh, it's been there for twenty-five years, you, day to day, you look at it, you look at it, and then, then Ron's passing, and you go, "Wow," and, uh, kinda brings back memories, and I got it, you know, attached to my house, one of those memories. And with that said, uh, he had a very beautiful, uh, well-attended funeral, you can always tell how much, how many people, somebody touches by who shows up at the funeral. And, uh, had a big crowd at the services, and then he had graveside services, and about half of that crowd managed to get out to Rose Hills for the graveyard, graveyard service. And in my young, you know, I'm, like to think of myself as young, but been to my share of funerals, and it just never seems to amaze me that something, every, somebody's services or somebody's life touched somebody and does in a certain way, and you see something different at a service or a graveside. And what I'm saying is that the graveside that we were there, we had, you know, it was a short service, it was good, at the graveside, he was rested, uh, next to his, uh, stepfather, Ken Cleveland, and, uh, on looking on a hill at a flag, like he always looks at a flag here, it was very popular with the flag. And, uh, the service was concluded, and the director come up, "Okay, that'll be concluded," and whatever, and everybody's standing there, under the canopy, he's around, you know, it's probably about a hundred and fifty or more people there, and all of a sudden, we see, looking at everybody, everybody's talking, nobody's leaving, and we're just kinda going, "Wow," and I'm thinking, "Nobody's leaving." And we sat there and stood there, and, uh, some of the, uh, service directors started pulling out roses of the flowers on the tripods that were all around, started handing them out, first the family, then everybody there, so everybody single filed with a rose and, and laid it on the coffin, and, uh, did that, and I'm thinking, "Okay, now everybody's gonna leave," nobody left. So we stood there and stood there, and now the, the truck comes with the, lack of better terms, the gravediggers. They show up and roll up the temporary grass carpet, and roll it up and put it away, you see the mechanical apparatus there with the, the coffin in the vault, then they start getting out some caulking and put the copying, caulking around the vault, then there's a little wheelie device that has the lid for the vault, concrete vault that you can't lift, guy starts lowering the, the coffin into the, the grave, nobody's left, not one soul. They get it low enough where this trailer thing can put the, the lid on it, and, uh, capsizes all the roses around the coffin and the lid and whatever, and nobody's leaving. And coffin, coffin, crank the coffin down to the bottom of the grave, and they get it down there, and nobody's still leaving, they start packing up this apparatus that has these ropes on it, and they wind them up, and they start carrying it away and putting it away in the truck, and these three guys are working away and nobody's leaving. Finally, the funeral director comes up and says, "Guys, you have to go, 'cause all that's left is a tractor," and he points to the tractor, "We can't get anybody hurt out here, the tractor's coming to, to fill the grave," and that's when everybody left, and that was something, it was a, a graveside service that nobody wanted to leave, that's how much he touched everybody, that nobody wanted to end it. And that's my story at night, and I would like to, uh, like to end this, uh, evening, this meeting, to be adjourned in memory of council member, the former mayor, Ron Schnablegger. Ron was born on December twenty-sixth, nineteen fifty-five, in Long Beach, California. He grew up in the city of Bellflower, graduated from Bellflower High School, and worked as a local real estate appraiser. His commitment to public service began when he was appointed to Public Safety Commission in nineteen ninety-two. Ron was a member of the Bellflower Unified School District Citizens Task Force and a founder and member of Bellflower Against Gangs. Ron was a member of the Bellflower Kiwanis Club for more than thirty years and actively served on the Bellflower Neighborhood Watch Program. Ron was elected to Bellflower City Council in a special election in March two thousand thirteen, and served as mayor pro temp two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and as mayor two thousand seventeen, eighteen. Ron was again appointed to serve four more years after being the only person in his district who filed papers to run in two thousand eighteen on his unexpired term, would have run, and it would've run till December twenty twenty-two. His favorite hobbies were spending time with his grandchildren, fishing, camping, oh, we missed a few, uh, shooting guns, big campfires, being the wagon master at camping, he would, he did all that stuff. And, uh, council member Schnablegger passed away on Tuesday, October thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, at the age of sixty-two. He is survived by his loving wife of thirty-three years, Joyce, four sons, Jason, Jesse, Joseph, and daughter-in-law, Cortina, Katrina, and Jake, and Jake's wife, Jamie. Nine grandchildren, children, two great-grandchildren, three brothers, Glenn, Jerry and John, three sisters, Linda, Donna and Sherry, and many aunts and uncles and cousins and nieces and nephews. Our deepest sympathy and heartfelt consolences go out to the entire Schnablegger family. And with that, I'm gonna adjourn this, uh, meeting in memory of all of our good friend, councilmember Ron Schnablegger.